Seven o'clock, we'll be heading and call the conference meeting order, roll call.
Brian?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Kass?
Here.
Wayack?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Wenzel?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Coon?
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda is approval of last month's minutes, we got two minutes.
Move.
All right. Motion second to approve the two meeting minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Treasury report.
Move.
Thank you.
There's motion second to approve the Treasury report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is citizen forum. What can we do for you folks?
Uh, we're just here for item number one, something about Peckham Road, we're kind of interested in that. We have a definite interest in what's going on in my neighborhood in my front yard. What are y'all doing?
Oh, okay, we'll get to that when we-
Exactly.
Okay, that'll work. Is it, anybody, Craig will get to you when we get to that.
Yeah.
Okay, nothing else under citizens forum, then we're going to planning commission. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, we had one planning commission meeting, it was earlier, uh, December 12th. Have a motion as second that the committee report be accepted as written.
Move, second.
There's motion second to approve the planning commission report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacousa County Council, a planning commission meeting was held on Tuesday, December 12th, 2017 at 5:30 PM in the Nacousa Council chambers. Members present were Al Marco Mayor, Gerald West, Second City Clerk, Gerald Cordis, Rick Schmidt, Brad Hamilton, August Wayack, Brian Krubsak. Also in attendance were Jim Lizer, Shane Bouch, Garrett Coon, Larry Krubsak. Number one, move by Wayack, second by Brian Krubsak to approve additional use permit to Bouch Companies LLC for purchase and operation of storage units in Business Park at 4150 Whitetail Lane. All members voted yes. If there's any discussion, uh, at this time, uh, if not, I'll entertain a motion as second to adopt item one.
Move, second.
Here's a motion as second to approve item one of the planning commission. Roll call.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Okay, next is Ways and Means.
Ways and Means had, um, one meeting, uh, make a motion accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Here's motion as second to approve the Ways and Means minutes as written, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The Ways and Means meeting was held on Tuesday, December 12th, 2017 at 6:15 PM in the council chambers at City Hall. Members present were Garrett Coon, Robert Schultz, August Wayack, and Brian Krubsak. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Robert Wenzel, Larry Krubsak, Rick Schmidt, John Gathers, and Brad Hamilton. Number one, we audited all the bills. Number two, we discussed Infotech IT update. And number three, we listened to the library board. No action necessary.
Next is public safety.
Public safety, item one meeting, uh, motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second. Here's a motion as second to approve public safety minutes as written, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public safety committee meeting was held Tuesday, December 5th, 2017 at 5:30 PM in the Nacousa Council chambers at City Hall. Members present were Terry Shemansky, Brad Hamilton, Larry Krubsak, and Robert Wenzel. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Garrett Coon, Ken Harchi, Dave Reinschmidt, Brian Mahan, and Mike Meyer, Mark Meyer. Number one, discuss fireside. Number two, recommend purchasing schedule software for police department for nine- $990 annually. Number three, recommend purchasing radar unit for $1,044. Number four, rec- discuss police office computers. Number five, recommended sending one officer to 2018 mid-winter training conference in the Dills, uh, February 11th through the 16th per handbook. Number six, discuss road ambulance. Number seven, discuss June company EMS meeting. Number eight, discuss $6,000 grant received from River View Foundation. Any questions? Make motion number two, three, and five.
Second.
Here's motion as second to approve items two, three, and five of the public safety's report. Roll call. Schultz?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Okay, next is property recreation and human affairs.
Uh, Mayor and members of Nacousa County Council, hit a property recreation and human affairs three meetings this month. Make move, make a motion to approve the minutes for the 27th and 28th meeting as printed and make an edit to the December 5th meeting on number seven. That states recommend Ken Harchi be allowed to purchase lots in Riverside Cemetery. I'd like to have where it says lots have out of sequence after lots. So it would be recommend Ken Harchi be allowed to purchase lots out of sequence in our Riverside Cemetery. I missed that. Show me those, sir.
I'll say.
Here's a motion as second to approve of property recreation and human affairs reports. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
A property recreation and human affairs meeting was held on Monday, November 27th, 2017 at 5:00 PM at the Charles and Joanne Lester Library. Members present were Robert Wenzel, Chairperson, Brian Krubsak, Secretary, August Wayack, and Garrett Coon. And on the back is a list of additional residents and interested parties who attended. If we add this one review. Uh, number one, we've discussed potential ATV, UTV routes in the city. Number two, we discussed the progress of Nacousa comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Number three, reviewed the action and implementation section of the plan. And number four, reviewed outdoor recreation needs assessment section of the plan. No action needed on that. Next one is the property recreation and human affairs meeting was held on Tuesday, November 28th, 2017 at 6:00 PM in the Nacousa Senior Community Center. Members present were Robert Wenzel, Chairperson, Brian Krubsak, Secretary, Brad Hamilton, also in attendance Mayor Al Marco, Rick Schmidt, DPW, Peter Manley, Adam De- De- DeKlin, Jason Grunberg, Perry Whitmore, Brian Geezy, Jason Burge, Darla Allen, Jim Webster, Rick Kofka, and Samantha Heckador. Number one, we discussed the survey update. Number two, reviewed mission statement keywords, mandates, stakeholders, and SWOT analysis. Number three, discussed operational versus strategic issues. And number four, discussed strategy development. No action needed on that. Last one, the property recreation and human affairs committee meeting was held on Tuesday, December 5th, 2017 at 4:00 PM in the Nacousa Council chambers. Members present were Robert Wenzel, Chairman, Brian Krubsak, Secretary, Garrett Coon, and August Wayack. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Larry Krubsak, and Brad Hamilton. Number one, recommended approval of certified survey map for Peckham Road. Number two, discussed cultural recreational plaza splash pad. Number three, discussed Lynn Creek estate lots. Number four, discussed comprehensive park and open space plan. Number five, we discussed the Nacousa community strategic plan. Number six, recommended any plot sale in Riverside Cemetery out of sequence be approved by our property recreation and human affairs committee. Number seven, recommend Ken Harchi be allowed to purchase lots out of sequence in Riverside Cemetery. Number eight, allowing, recommend allowing Riverside Park Shelter 1, 2, and Lions Rentals to residents for $25 and non-residents for $40. Number nine, discussed community, Nacousa Community Center. Number 10, recommend approval of certified survey map and approve the land donation for cemetery from Down Tower. Number 11, recommend to publish demolition ordinance according to state statutes. So, I'll, uh, I know that we have some people want to talk about some of the items, so.
Rick, you want to go over item one?
Sure. You had some questions on the Peckham Road CSM, and I believe I met with you briefly out at your, at your house.
We did.
And, um, at the end of Peckham Road, you own 40 acres on the south side there, and there's an 80-acre parcel that's on the north side, and that's was being split into two 40-acre parcels. And the westerly 40-acre parcel didn't have access. So this certified survey map grants 33 feet of, of, uh, of land that's going to be attached to that west 40 so that they can access that, that other 40 acres there. So that's, all this certified survey map is doing is, is splitting the two 40-acre parcels and, and attaching the 33-foot piece, you know, cutting it out of the first 40 and the second 40 acres. Nothing else is changing on Peckham Road.
Item one.
Thank you. Will there be a possibility that use will require the 33 feet on our side also?
Not, not at this time, there's, no.
Not at this time.
I mean-
And when you do decide to do that, my alderman, who I just met, um, who's never introduced himself to me, um, someone will notify us and let us know that something is in the works. I mean, I didn't know, uh-
What for?
I didn't know that this was happening until I called you because I saw stakes in my front yard with ribbons attached. And I'm going, oh, how fun, what's happening here? And then I did call, uh, Rick here, and he did come down promptly, and he told us a little bit what was going on. Uh, but I do, I would really appreciate, um, courtesy from, from you, um, my council and my representative to let me know if something's going on, seeing as how in a s- in the city you have so many people on a road. We are not really con- what we are, city. But still, there's only just a few of us that own on Peckham Road. So if something's going on on Peckham Road, we really would like to know what is happening, um, how it will affect us, that type of thing. So, um, I guess that's why I'm here, to find out if there's anything more that's going to happen other than what you discussed with me at my front yard.
Certainly not, and, um, and part of that depends upon you. I mean, if you decide someday you want to develop that property of yours and turn it into a residential subdivision, you certainly control that.
Yeah.
Since you own those 40 acres, you can decide what to do with that at that time, too.
Correct.
You're in control of your destiny.
But if we, but-
Now, if they do decide to make something of that 40 acres that is outside of the city limits, uh, which we're putting that road in so that they can get access to their land outside of city limits.
Right.
And if they do decide to process that and, let's say, make a subdivision, okay. Shh, I didn't say that. But will you be taking then and making Peckham Road the full width of Peckham Road? Are you going to, um, make it, is it going to be turned into a dirt road? Is it going to be turned into a gravel road? Is, from the center onto the 33?
Well, right now it's not planned, the city's not planning any road in that area at all.
But you're not?
No, the ci- the city is not.
Well, we're, you're, we're putting the right way to do it.
No, no, no.
No.
Can I?
Oh, yeah.
My name is, my name is Jim Quinn. I'm the city attorney.
Nice to meet you.
And your name is?
Diane Nichol.
Okay. The city is not doing anything on Peckham Road.
Okay.
Everything that's happening out there is on private property. You may know the owners. Um, Margaret Klein had lived out there for the last 30 years.
Yes.
And Margaret's stepbrother, uh, Ron Byken-
Yes.
Was the other owner.
Correct.
And Ronald and his stepsister Margaret owned that 80 acres together as tenants in common. And they decided that they were going to split up the land, and Margaret was going to end up with the land in the city of Nacousa and the Byken family with the land in the town of Port Edwards. Peckham Road only is, does not get all the way to the town of Port Edwards. It stops about 488 feet or 424 feet. So that final 440-some feet from the blacktop to the town line is on private property.
Okay.
And in order for the Byken family to get to the town of Port Edwards property, the agreement was that instead of Mrs. Klein, who's going to keep Nacousa, instead of giving an easement, she would just give a similar strip of land, only it would be owned by the Klein, I'm sorry, owned by the Bykins. And so the Bykins will own 40 acres in the town of Port Edwards. And they'll own a strip of land about 33 feet by 440 feet, which is their land on their property. And as the attorney who has been involved in this, I asked the city to approve this because alt- because the design, the design of this 33-foot, 440-foot length, it has the appearance of almost being a dedicated right-of-way. But it's all happening on private property. And, and if the city ever wanted to have another 33 feet so they'd have a total of 60, 60, they would have to deal both with the Byken family and you or your successor in owners in order to get that property, to get that right-of-way.
Very good.
Clear it out?
That, that does, does.
And so the stakes that you saw in the survey markers, that was, um, at the request of the Klein and the Byken, not at the request of the city of Nacousa.
And that's why when you're asked if, you know, to keep notice, since it was being done privately, the city really wasn't involved in all the details from that standpoint.
But it was, it's, you did come out to help us out.
Right. I don't think you're going to see a 33-foot road, uh, path dug out there. I think you'll, the Byken family will probably build enough of a path so that they can continue down that 44, 440-some feet to then be on their town of Port Edwards, 40 acres.
Okay, very good. Yes, thank you.
It'll be like more of a, a, just a driveway to get that.
It will, yes, with no amenities by you to-
Correct.
-make it into a half of a road.
That's correct.
It's just going to be dirt or, or grass.
Gravel, whatever, some half, whatever.
Yes, well, very good, well, thank you. You have cleared that up, and I thank you for helping me out. Do we have any other questions? We do not have any other questions. And I thank you very much.
Okay.
Are we staying?
Um, Jim wants to make a quick comment on number 11.
Uh, the recommendation is to adopt, um, and then go forward with publication of what we know also known as the Salvage Ordinance. My recollection is public works that have been working on this as an ordinance from January of 2016 and then finalized it at the June, June 2017 meeting. And they were all set, and they're, if you looked at their minutes, and I believe it's the June minutes, it was Dr. Mand, adopt the Salvage Ordinance. Then I said, please don't do it because as soon as you do it, we have to publish it. And I'm not quite sure how I want to go forward with publishing this 10-page ordinance. And then, um, I figured that out finally. And so now we, um, the public, it's really public works are saying, what we recommended and what we're all set to do in June, let's do it tonight, yeah. Is that accurate, Larry?
It is on mine because, uh-
Without, right?
We hear no other items, so.
Yeah. The annual meeting is yours, or this one, as well.
So it's, it's just, it's been recommended, it's been reviewed, it's time to adopt and move forward.
To adopt and publish.
Yes.
And number 10, Craig.
Well, good evening, everybody. Pleased that this project is coming to conclusion. As you can imagine, I don't know why I'm, I think I'm the designated call Craig if we have an issue with property, I don't know where to put it.
It's call Craig if we have an issue with- And then you create anything you want after that.
I do get other calls, by the way. But, um, very pleased, uh, Down Tower, when we, as you know, we've been, we've donated some things at the park and that type of thing. And our relatively new general manager, Sylvain Raku, who would have been here tonight, but he's actually flying to the corporate office tonight, so, and, so, we're going to get him to a meeting probably after the first of the year to do, maybe do something as more of a, yeah, formal dedication or whatever we want to do, but-
Excellent.
We were, uh, pleased to, that this went. It's always good working with Jim, Jim and I have known each other for a long time, working with Rick. And I think we're at the point of it's, the certified survey map has been approved by us and approved, and it's now, and it, the deed has been, or it's been recorded, correct? And, uh, we actually were on, we were on a conference call, Jim and myself, with our Down Tower attorney, and, um, talking about this. And I, I think the next step isn't it to do a quick claim deed or however we do it?
Correct.
Okay.
We're at the stage, as of today, the end of today's business, we're now at the stage where I said I would draft the quick claim deed and the Wisconsin transfer tax return, and then we were going to set it up to your lawyer for review, but still an idea of your, uh, Nacousa local general manager signing a document and getting it recorded if he's back in town by, uh, before New Year's.
Oh, yeah, he will be, certainly, yeah. He's, and he, we did find out he is, uh, he's the approved, he, he is authorized to approve those things, so. And we're just, we're very, I just want to say, it's, it was, it's always a pleasure working with the city, and this just came across very well. Uh, also working, just a couple other ones, just FYI type of thing, I call it the little triangle, Jim and I have talked about this, we own a little piece of property kind of over there that, I'm not sure we knew we owned it. We, we found out because we didn't cut the lawn, so, which is okay. Guy over there can let us go. We're working on that one, too, and then also, you may, well, now with the snow, you might not see it, but many years ago, actually, back, uh, you know, I started with what was in Georgia Pacific in 96, so it, and it predates me. The land across, so anybody here that's a member or knows people at Sacred Heart,
yeah.
Church and school, you might notice there are some pink stakes up there now on the playground property. That was supposed to be donated in whole to Sacred Heart, and I just bring this up for FYI in case anybody asks you that, you know. We are, we just finished the survey map to, due to a bunch of reasons, everyone assumed that was done, but it wasn't officially done. It's little chunks, so if you think this survey map looks odd, you should see the, the one for that, but that will be hopefully completed again in the next month or so. So if you, and I'm working with Pat Rawland and also with the father over there, Father Swing, and we're trying to get that, we need to do some paperwork yet, but just so, in case anyone asks you as council members why the pink, that's, that's to clear that all up, and that all will be, as the intention was, to be donated to Sacred Heart.
Excellent.
Because they've used that for, I mean, we're, we're talking-
Correct, they used to be, that used to be our baseball field.
Is that right?
Yes.
And actually, we're the, we found out that where the playground part is, if you're facing it, it's on the right side of the big property, that actually is still our property. And we obviously have never known that or used it, so. So that is going on, and then on a totally unrelated note, just FYI, you might have, you might be seeing on our sign that, um, they are going to be opening up for production employment again. I believe they're going to do four dates, and I know it's the, the, two days are the week after Christmas, and again, you'll be at the, uh, the old, uh, post office for the train centers.
8th, 9th, 30th, or 3rd and 2nd. 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th.
So that's just, um, you know, just FYI, so. Again, on behalf of Down Tower, we're just pleased to work with Rick and for, and, and Jim, it's been a pleasure, it'd be nice to get that all done, and I appreciate you volunteering to do whatever you call that Wisconsin tax thing because you, you told our attorney that she doesn't want at her part, at this point in her career, even learn how to do that, so.
All right.
So, we appreciate you doing that, so.
You're welcome.
I think we appreciate the, the interest.
No, thank you for-
It's been great working with Craig and Down Tower on this project, and, uh, it's been a great, uh, great addition of the community, so thank you, Craig.
Appreciate it, Randy. Yep, thank you, Craig. Well, unless anyone has any other, other questions?
Okay. We've, uh, moved to record, approve number one.
Thank you, we'll see you later.
Okay.
Six, seven, eight, 10, and 11.
Sorry.
Here's a motion as second to approve items one, six, seven, eight, 10, and 11 of property recreation and human affairs on Tuesday, December 5th. Uh, roll call.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Next is wage and salary.
Wage and salary, we got two meetings this month. On the meeting of, uh, we had one on November 27th and November 30th. November 27th meeting, items three, we need to change it. It should say 2% increase January 1, 2019, 2% increase January 1, 2020, and a .5% increase on July 1st, 2020. So, uh, instead of a 2.5, it goes to 2 in, on January 1, and then 2.5 on, or excuse me, a .5 on July 1. With that, I move to approve the, uh, minutes as presented.
Second. Here's a motion as second to approve the minutes, the wage and salary minute, uh, meetings, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The Honorable Mayor and members of Nacousa County Council, wage and salary committee meeting was held on Monday, November 27th, 2017, 6:30 PM, Nacousa Council chambers. Members President Brad Hamilton, Larry Krubsak, August Wayack, Robert Schultz, also in attendance Mayor Al Marco, Ryan Krubsak, Sean Woods, Andy Burke, Josh Cole, Brian Mahan, and Rich Burghausen for the WPPA. Item one, motion by Schultz, second by Wayack, go in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 1928.5, grant one, grant C, to begin negotiations with the police union. Hamilton, yes, Krubsak, yes, Wayack, yes, Schultz, yes, motion carried. Item two, motion by Krubsak, second by Wayack, go in open session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 1928.5, grant two, make recommendations, opposed session. Hamilton, yes, Krubsak, yes, Wayack, yes, and Schultz, yes, motion carried. Item three, recommend three-year contract with the police union with a 2% increase on January 1, 2018, 2% increase on January 1, 2019, 2% increase January 1, uh, 2020, and a .5 increase on July 1, 2020. Item four, recommend assistant chief slash patrolman change from patrolman rate plus $150 to an additional $1.14 per hour first year, $1.44 for the second year, and a $75 for the third year. That is not in each, each year, that is what it will end up being. Item five, recommend field training officer F, or FTO, be paid an additional $1 per hour during those hours which are serving as field training officer. That is at the discretion of the police chief. Any questions?
Question about, uh, number three? Just that wage and salary? Trying to find it here. Hold the send all down. I didn't think it was two and then .5 in July.
Yeah, July, July 1, it was, that's what we agreed to, is that, we didn't want to go to a 2.5 right away.
Yeah.
It was two, and July, two, and January 1, and then an extra .5, just .5, not 2.5 more, just .5 more. That's how I sent it all. In fact, I have a picture. I printed these off or something. Yeah, July 1, 2020, a .5% across the board. Any other question? Are you done?
Yep, well, I was just-
All right, I'm, make motion for items three, four, and five.
Here's a motion as second to approve items three, four, and five of the wage and salary meeting, uh, November 27th. Roll call. Roll up.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Schmatsky?
Yes.
Okay. Honorable mayor members of the Nacousa County Council, wage and salary committee meeting was held on Thursday, November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, five P.M. in the Nacousa Council Chambers. Members present were Brad Hamilton, Larry Krubsack, August Wayack, and Robert Schultz. Also in attendance was Brian Krubsack and Doug Nelson. Motion by Wayack, second by Krubsack, go on to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen twenty-eight-five, grant one, grant C, to begin negotiations with Public Works Department. Hamilton, yes. Krubsack, yes. Wayack, yes. And Schultz, yes. Motion carried. Item two, motion by Krubsack, second by Schultz, go on to open session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen twenty-eight-five-two, make recommendations from closed session. Hamilton, yes. Krubsack, yes. Wayack, yes. And Schultz, yes. Motion carried. Item three, recommend a one-year contract with a two percent wage increase. Any questions? Move to adopt item three.
Excited. There is a motion, a second to approve item three of the November thirtieth wage and salary committee. Roll up.
Schultz?
Yes.
Schmatsky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
That's it for committee reports. Old business, do we need to do anything with the salvage ordinance or are we covering under property?
I think we're covering it under, yeah.
Property, right?
Yes.
Anybody have any else under old business? First, under new business, library board appointments, there were two board members have stepped down for conflicts with jobs and things like that. We've got a request to replace them with Jennifer Dye and Lanieta Kirst. They would continue, they would take over the two terms, and both would be through April of twenty nineteen. They were just appointed last year.
So moved, second.
There is a motion, a second to approve Jennifer Dye and Lanieta Kirst for the library board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, Joe has a request for the election workers for next year.
I move for the election workers to present.
Second.
There is a motion, a second to approve the list of the election workers for next year. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One in two department reports. First is Police Chief's monthly report.
So moved, second.
There is a motion, a second to approve Police Chief's monthly report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Public Works Department's monthly report.
Second.
There is a motion, a second for the Public Works Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Fire Department's monthly report.
There isn't one.
There isn't a report. I move for the Fire Department's monthly report.
Second.
There is a motion, a second for the Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Building Inspector's monthly report.
Move.
Second.
Motion, a second for the Building Inspector. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Community Centers' monthly report.
Move.
Second.
Motion, a second for the Community Center. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Airport Commission.
So moved.
You got anything?
Nothing major, just that they're, they're done, they've got a couple punchless things left over, but the tarmac is done for this year. We're working on projects for next year for the four million dollars, well, actually, it's a couple years ago, for four million, the four million that we got, we're granted by the state. Just going into winter mode, doing, keeping snow off the runways and keeping, getting maintenance done that we can, it's just an ongoing process. Again, anybody, you're more than welcome to come on up, will you show your honor, one of the staff?
Brad, is Jeremy, need any other assistance with any, last year, we helped them with maintenance on a tractor or do anything, is that an issue?
So far, no, but I'll tell them that you're more than willing to...
Okay, yeah, if he has anything, he can certainly let me know.
They really appreciate it, too, it was really, they're really very happy about it, we brought it up, but it was really nice, so.
Got a motion, a second for the Airport Commission Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the bills.
With three bill lists, and bank commission, three hundred, council, nine seventy-five, ways and means, two fifty, public safety, two fifty, property rec, six ninety-five, wage and salary, five hundred. Mayor, six hundred. Airport Commission, eight-five.
There is a motion, a second to approve the bills. Roll up.
Schultz?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Schmatsky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Anybody have anything else?
I'm looking at your...
Second.
There is a motion, a second to adjourn the evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're here.